This is December 2nd. A copy of the Open Meetings Act is located on the north wall of the legislative chambers. Commissioner Borgerson is out of town for NACO today, so I will be running the meeting for you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And I see to the right of me, we have a little rowdy bunch on that end, so I've already asked for the gavel to see if I can control that a little bit. Okay, we will move to the agenda for the Douglas County Board of Equalization. Roll call, please.
Here.
First one is, A, approval of the minutes of the Board of Equalization meeting held Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. And the second one is called for a meeting and set Tuesday, December 9th, as the date for hearing on certified assessment corrections reflecting the addition of omitted property to the tax rolls or increased value on property. Any questions or comments?
Second.
Please vote. Next, we have citizens' comments on the Board of Equalization. Is there anybody in the chambers that wishes to speak that is not on the agenda? Thank you, I see none. Next, we have two resolutions. Number D, hearing on certified assessment correction reflecting omitted or undervalued property and approval of corrections to the tax roll laid over from the November 18th, Tuesday, meeting. And the next one is application for tax exemptions on motor vehicles recommended for approval by the county treasurer.
Most to approve and adjourn.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Adjournment.
And there's no adjournment.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We could do that.
I'm ready. No, I'm just, sorry about that. Adjournments leave.
Was there a second?
A second.
It does not include adjournment.
Give me a break.
Okay, Mike and Claire, please vote. But I will approve your adjournment.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation, Property Value Amendment Procedure, from Monty Bowman. We're not voting on that because it's not, I talked to Patrick this morning, so. Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Monty Bowman with Haverus. I think Mike wasn't here last week. We kind of closed carrying this over from last week. Madam Chair, closed kind of on three notes, specifically, number one, having the Douglas County Attorney's Office see if they could find the old notes on when they attempted to make corrections to this back in 2011, and why, after that individual left the office, nothing ever got done afterwards. The second thing was to give the assessor's office time to prepare rebuttal to the argument that we presented about the property record file. The one thing that came out from that last, last meeting, last presentation, Mr. Goodwilly stated what we've been arguing all along is that property profile, when you go up and ask for a property record file, is given to the property owner. At the point that owner turns around and files a protest, then another software module appears to be used to create the assessment report given to the Board of Equalization. Inside that software program is the property profile. So, anything outside of the property profile that the Board of Equalization is being given is completely different than what the owner has been getting. So what our argument had been for the last four years is that that software program that they use to create the assessment report should be used for the property record file, because then if somebody files a protest, no matter what, both are the same, no matter what. And that's the problem we've been running into, is because we prepare an argument based on what we found in the profile, we get in front of referees or Board of Equalization, and there's evidence that we have no idea where it comes from, or how to, we weren't prepared for it, no way to do an argument. You can't change your argument midstream either, once you file a protest. So, that material is extremely important to know exactly what's being given to the Board of Equalization, because nine times out of 10, the owner doesn't even see it. It's prepared and kept downstairs in the clerk of court's office. The clerk of court, Dan Esch, is where we get those records. But your property profile, you get it in the assessor's office, from the records division. So it's two different complete departments that have two different reports altogether. And they're never the same, and that's what's causing the problem, where nobody can ever prepare or go in to argue anything to do with their value. They had started to correct those values in 2011, but Mr. Barrett had switched jobs in January of 2012. From that point on, we made every attempt we could to get them to correct these again, to start looking at the property record files, to make sure that they were both the same again. Nothing happened. That's when we filing, filing, started filing complaints again with the Attorney General's office. And they pretty much admit that's what's been going on. We just want to see that they, because they're coming around and reassessing right now as we speak, we're going to go through this again, all over again, next year. We're trying to make the process as simple as possible for next year. Any valuation change that's occurring to these property record files right now should be in some form of an assessment report, not just a property profile.
Mike, one second. Mike, did you want?
No.
I'm sorry, thank you. Did you want to wait till he's finished?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for the, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're just trying to make sure that something can be done, to make sure that anybody that's looking at new assessments now, that should be reflected in the property record file. Every bit of the notes, the calculations, they should already exist in the property record file somewhere. And right now, that's not occurring until after a protest is actually being filed. That's what we're saying, is they're creating it after the fact.
All right.
We're saying that if you're doing an increase on the property, that assessment report should be prepared at that time in full, because if it is, there's never going to be a question of the two not being the same. They'd be identical no matter what, and that's what they're supposed to be. That's kind of where we're at now, is trying to figure out how to amend those values back to where they were when all of it started. Some of these go back as far as 2010. We have only a couple of dozen that are just from this year, not that many from this year. But we do have quite a few that do go all the way back to 2010. And speaking to the owners, we've explained to them that if the value does get amended, it's their responsibility immediately, and we've been trying to talk with our new assessor that in February, we do intend to take each and every one of these back in during informal hearings to try to reset value for 2015. Some of these specifically where there's development going along 72nd Street, 72nd and Grover, we're working with at least three of those hotels that have just been brought in, where they've been just distressed properties, and they're slowly trying to bring those three hotels back up down there. Their increase going from four and a half to $18.9 million doesn't give them a chance to even try to get their feet underneath them. Working on something that's more of a reasonable, because if they're taking income statements, they're all negative, and still they're seeing their value go up $15 million. And it's like, you know, they're in the red. So, we can understand as they become profitable where their value does increase. But the money they poured into those hotels so far has been to bring them back up to code, and try to figure out how to get them up and running the way they're supposed to be. And that goes for the Baymont and the Ramada. They were both ran in the dirt by prior ownership for the last 12 years. And the value history on the properties reflect that as well. But when you get into the property record files, we're seeing an income statement that they're using, so we, of course, provide ours, and still see the value go up. Too many errors that we didn't even know about until we got the assessment reports later. We found out they were questioning the sale, we could prove it was a normal arms-length sale, and any due diligence would have shown that fact. We would have had other arguments available to the property owner. And that's what we've been running into on every one of these. Trying to have it done with the county attorney's office, as we can see, that did not work the first time. So, we let the owners know that if they sign, and what we are going around and getting is a request to amend their value from each and every parcel for the owners. We are having them sign with the understanding that if it does get amended, that it's their responsibility to go back in, in February, because we want to address equalization issues that may come up as well. Because some of these deal with land, and some of these, most of them deal with just the improvement values going up. But there are a few that had issues dealing with the land, where we weren't sure if they were using normal arms-length transactions or not. So that's what we're supposed to be doing, I think, now, is trying to figure out what procedure we would use to amend them. We bring them in from the owners, have them all prepared before next Tuesday, give the board time to look at each of the properties. We're separating those in three groups. One group is just the 2014, very straightforward. Then we have two other groups that go back to 2010. That first group is just based on a value increase. And then, the last group is unique properties. We have a few of those, not very many, but there are a few of those. U.S. Seed is one, and Funplex is another one. Funplex becomes unique because not only does it have designated federal floodplain, but because of all the work done on that corridor down there, they also have a flash flood, which is not taken into consideration for a negative, because this year, when we had the deluge of rain, they were underwater for three days. Then they then have to clean the park.
Say, Mr. Bowman, could I, can I stop you? I appreciate all this information, but I'm very frustrated.
Okay.
We have nothing to do with this.
Okay.
We are spectators in the evaluation process.
Yes.
And I'm an opponent of even having a Board of Equalization. I think it's a farce. We don't have the authority, I asked the county attorney about five years ago, who has the authority for setting evaluations in Douglas County, and it came back, the assessor. And Commissioner Borgerson and I have been talking about, you know, what we feel about the Board of Equalization, and we've seen how we reduce, listen to taxpayers reduce, and the next year, the evaluation's right back where it was. So I think what I would suggest you do, and I don't mean to interrupt you, but what I would suggest that you do is concisely make points about what you think needs to be done to remedy the problem. And then, you can give us a copy, but it should go to the new registered deeds county assessor, Diane Badiato, and wouldn't hurt to send it to Roger Morrissey as well. But that's what I would suggest, because you're just, you know, I appreciate your frustration, and it's, this is the place to air those, and you're welcome to speak here, but I just want to make it clear that we don't do windows. So, it's very frustrating to me to hear your frustrations, because we're all in the same boat, you're kind of in the second from the backseat, and we're in the backseat of the bus. We have nothing to do with valuations, absolutely nothing. So, what can I tell you?
So, what she had done before was to have the county attorney look at this, or, sorry, Madam Chair, in 2011, when we ran across this problem.
Ms. Mary Ann Borgerson?
Yes.
Yeah.
And basically, somebody from the county attorney's office was told to take those cases where the situations occurred, make sure that those values got amended, they were approved by the board.
Yeah.
And only one of those actually happened.
This, again, is something, I guess I'd just say, you know, make some bullet points on how we can do something in the future, looking forward. Is there some accountability that needs to be put into place, somebody following up, or whatever you think it is that needs to be done? I like, I know, you're a very credible person. I, you know, I believe what you say, and I, you know, you have evidence of what's taken place. But I think to go forward with it, we need to have some suggestions on how to make changes, and how to make people accountable if you think there's been some lapse. But again, we're just in the back of the bus with you. So, that's what I would say, but you're welcome to continue with the presentation, but it's very frustrating to me, because there's nothing, I don't know of anything we can do.
Well, that's basically what she was trying to do, of what Mary, Mary Ann was trying to take and do again, was to try to reestablish what we had set up in 2011, and try to get it done again, to make sure that where these errors did occur, and I'll do this, like you said, for next time, up on next Tuesday, to bring it to where it's easier to take and look at it for a vote, but we're looking for what process can we actually use to correct this problem and make sure it doesn't happen in the future.
Are you looking for a vote from the board?
Well, they're going, that's going to be part of it, on what the property record file is supposed to be, and what's supposed to be in the property record file, because...
Well, I would sure bring this before Ms. Badiato, she's going to be taking office in January, and look forward to implementing something, because like I said, we have no authority over the assessor's office at all. People think the county board is a supreme ruler, most of us think that, too. But anyway, we're the supreme ruler, and we control the world. Uh-uh, we don't. So, each individual office is elected independently, they're accountable only to the voters. And so people, when things go wrong, or there's something needs to be improved, it's the individual offices that have to make those changes. Mr. Kavanaugh doesn't report to us, Ms. Badiato doesn't, none of the elected officials do. I mean, we have good relations for the most part, we've been sued a couple of times by them, but anyway, and we lost. But we just, it's a separate, it's a separate operation, we overlook departments. And we only have one, I think, one ordinance authority, unlike the city. All we can control is trucks jake braking, driving down highways and down gearing and making lots of noise. I think that's the only thing we control.
Only if it's uninteresting.
Only if it's uninteresting.
We can't even do that.
Okay, so there you go. But I want to see these changes and these suggestions take place, because you're where the rubber meets the road, you know these things, and it's extremely valuable to us to get this and have it implemented. I'd like to see that happen. I really would.
And I've talked to Diane, so I'm going to, I'm going to try to set up another meeting with her and Larry again, and kind of, kind of go over the fine-tuning basis, that's kind of what I wanted to cover a little bit more today, but...
Okay, well, go right ahead.
And then...
I just meant to tell you where I'm, I'm just, you've got great ideas, I just, we don't, we don't implement them, you know?
Okay.
We can try, help you, so...
That's kind of what we're looking for, is a direction on how we're supposed to go about trying to get these corrected, because if we can do this through our new assessor next year, then...
Yeah.
We can go ahead and start establishing, we've already got, you know, a request for these amended values occurring from the owners with this stipulation, they know we're going to be working with the new assessor anyway. We just want to make sure that everybody kind of knows where we're at, we're trying to avoid this for next year, because without a vote, it will change, I can see that the property record files may change next year, but what about those properties that they're out assessing right now? That's the ones that concern me, because that's what's going to occur.
I have to ask our legal counsel, what would we be voting on, do you know? I mean, are we voting on individual pieces of property, or some procedures, or what is it you think we're voting on, do you know? Okay, I don't know that a vote from us is going to mean anything. I don't know what it is you want us to vote on. Is it individual pieces of property and their valuations, or is it procedures?
It would be procedures that we would use to make sure that those are amended.
Okay, so would it be a Board of Equalization procedure, do you think?
It's going to end up affecting the board, that's what we're trying to do.
If it's procedures that the assessor does, we don't have any authority over that, so there, I don't see what we could vote on. You have to, you really have to work with Ms. Badiato, and I know she'd be willing to listen to you, she and Larry would listen to you, and that's where the change has to occur. You know, again, you're welcome to come and make the presentation, but I don't know what we'd vote on, we don't have any influence or effect or power to change anything in the assessor's office, except the number of chief deputies. That's a sore point with me, anyway.
So basically, these amendments could take place, the amendments of values can take place through the assessor's office next year during the next administration, so we can start preparing those for that now.
If you, if Ms. Badiato and her staff agree with what you're proposing, then it would come back to us, I would think, through the, and direct the county, the Board of Equalization, our procedures would, they would tell us, this is what we want done, and that's what we do. So the Board of Equalization then would enact what the assessor's telling us. I mean, we participate in that, setting up the rules and so forth. We have a very competent staff that works with those BOE procedures, and we have a good relationship with the assessor, we're not at, you know, swords or anything, but, so we work with them. But I would suggest you have Ms. Badiato and her staff talk about these changes that you think ought to be done, and then she will, and her staff would present them to us at the appropriate time, and, you know, and we hopefully would keep you informed.
Okay.
That's what I think.
Well, I'd know right away when I pull a property record file.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Mr. Bowman, I really appreciate your, your help, it's very valuable.
Monty, you're more than welcome to come back next week with another presentation, if you like, you know, if you want to, you know, like Commissioner Boyle says, to put it in, you know, more concise bullet points, but you're more than welcome, but as he said, we really can't vote on anything, especially if it's on a presentation. There's no action on the agenda to approve or deny or anything, it's only a presentation only. So, but you're more than welcome to come back next week. Okay, thank you. All righty, next we have a protest, protest of certified assessment correction 14121 for property located at 4323 Washington Street, submitted by South Council Holding Company of Omaha. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak on this? Mr. Goodwilly?
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Goodwilly, Douglas County Assessor. What this actually is, is sort of the, the other shoe relating to the denial of exemption for the Knights of Columbus property. They were denied, along with the Woodman properties, as fraternal benefit societies under a section in Chapter 44. And once you deny the value, then you have to go out and add value to a previously exempt property, and that's what we did. Mr., Mr., I spoke to Mr. Bober from the, the South Council Holding Company. His protest, if you look at it carefully, seems to relate more to the exemption issue than anything relating to the value. In fact, I spoke to him, he said he doesn't really have an issue with the value, he just wants to be sure that, that the exemption piece is being pursued. And actually, the South Council has an appeal on the exemption piece pending at Turk. So they're protected in that way. If they prevail at Turk, the value would be removed. But he doesn't seem to have an issue with respect to the number we placed on it, and I think Marco San Martin referred the protest to one of the county's referees for review. I think that referee may have a recommendation, but, but I'm not, I'm not the referee.
So, do we still need to approve or deny this today?
Well, I think, yeah, I think you have it in front of you, so you have to deal with it. So I think our recommendation would be to deny, based on the referee's determination.
And what is the rule of the board?
When you say to deny, to deny any change?
Yes, to leave the value as it stands.
To uphold the current valuation?
Exactly, I'm sorry, didn't articulate it very well.
Is that the motion? Second.
Commissioner Boyle?
Okay, so the value is 202,500?
Yep. Yes.
Is that right? And what does Mr. Bober think it should be?
He didn't really say.
Okay. So is there any, like other organizations, is there any part of the building that's tax-exempt?
No, not if you, not if you believe the provision that applies to fraternal benefits apply to this building. It is solely owned, it's not leased out to any other exempt entity, it seems to apply the same fraternal benefit statute as applies to Woodman.
Okay, what about, does it have a liquor license?
It may, I don't know.
Well, I think that's relevant. If it does, it would kind of throw it into another category.
Well, they could, they could still have one, but as long as, for exemptions under 77202 normally, this is kind of in a different category, because of fraternal benefit statute, it seems to fall under. But normally, you can't sell liquor more than 20 hours a week, but what it also means is you can sell it less. So...
So...
Having the license or not having the license isn't necessarily dispositive, it's the hours you sell alcohol normally.
If they were nonprofit, would their, if they changed, applied to change their status from fraternal to nonprofit, what would that do, you suppose, as far as you're concerned, tax?
Well, I don't know, we'd have to look at, to see if they did it. But, but we'd have to look at the use of the building.
I'm sorry.
I said we'd have to, we look at the use of the building.
Okay. All right, well, thank you.
Right now, we have a motion and a second on the floor to deny, please vote.
To uphold the 202,500.
Okay.
It would be denying the protest and upholding the value, I think.
Denying the protest. Please vote.
You know, I have one more question, Mr. Goodwilly, after we vote. Your computer's acting like me.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyle?
Yes, was the good, was the value, I'm looking at this legal description thing here, says assessed value was 97,200, that's, that's the land.
True.
Okay, and then the, how much is that a foot, do you think, is that, how much is that a square foot, you know?
I don't.
Well, it seems a little high to me. I'll look into it further. Thanks.
Do you have any further questions, Commissioner Boyle?
I don't, thank you.
Okay. Mike, you may as well stay there at the podium.
Yeah, I wasn't, I wasn't going anyplace.
Next, we have an appeal, appeal, a rejection of homestead exemption for 2014, for Craig Mason, 17217T Court, Omaha, Nebraska.
My understanding of this is this was a first-time applicant for homestead, and when he initially applied, or when he applied, it appears that the property is actually owned by a trust. And it is possible for, for a homestead exemption to be granted when property is owned by a trust, but there are some really specific requirements for it. And we asked for a copy of the trust, and it was not forthcoming by the time the billing deadline was coming around, so we sent out a denial letter. Subsequently, we have gotten a copy of the trust document from the Masons, and it does appear that they will qualify for homestead, so I guess my recommendation today would be go ahead and, go ahead and grant the appeal, because we are going to have to go ahead and, and change the status to grant homestead anyway.
Thank you. What is the rule of the board? Is there a second?
Second.
Is that included German?
Now it does.
Please vote.
Hello?
Yeah, it does.
Just blow, please.
Thank you, Mike.
You're welcome. Oh, I thought so, man. Okay. Motion passes.
Thank you. What did you, what was in your Wheaties this morning?
I don't know.
Oh, my goodness.
I've been up early, and I've been working on stuff, and I, all you and I, and all sorts of stuff going on, I've been really busy, and I'm kind of, I only had one cup of coffee till I got here, and now I'm really making up a lost time.
Cut him off. Now we will move to the agenda of the Douglas County Board of Commissioners. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Borgerson, Commissioner Boyle, Commissioner Duda, Commissioner Craft, Commissioner Morgan, Commissioner Rogers. Madam Chair.
Here, thank you. First, we have approval of minutes of the Board of Commissions meeting held Tuesday, November 18th, 2014. Next, we have approval of claims submitted for payment process through Tuesday, December 6th, December 2nd, 2014. Complete listing is on file in the office of the County Clerk Comptroller, and available on the Douglas County Clerk Comptroller's webpage. Any questions or comments? Currently, there's A through N. Number J, approved contract with Veterans Administration Medical Center. And number N, approved professional services agreement to provide plastic and reconstructive surgery patient care by Deborah Ann Riley, M.D. Both of those will be laid over till next week. So we have A through N, less J, less N. Is there any other ones that, any Commissioners which two I have held out?
I would move for the approval of the consent agenda as amended.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Give me one second.
me not to talk, so I'm going to go ahead and start talking.
Do it.
The next item on our agenda is recognizing Omaha North High School, and I can't help as a Viking to be very proud of this. I, I had the occasion to go down to the championship game last week with my brothers and son, all who went to North. We went last year. North's on quite a roll. I am very proud of what they do. I honestly believe this is as well-balanced of a high school football team as I have ever seen. They've been great and just getting better. Next year might be tough for them, losing half their kids, but what a, what a phenomenal season they have had and how proud I am to be a Viking and to get to watch them do all that self.
Thank you.
Having said that.
Thank you, Commissioner Duda. I understand there are some here for Omaha North High School. Would you like to step up to the podium, please, while I read your, read your resolution?
And Phil Rooney was at the game because his daughter is the student manager for the football team.
Oh, cool.
Welcome. Would you like to tell us your names, please?
Jim Savio, Athletic Director.
Larry Martin, Head Football Coach.
Thank you. Let me read the resolution. This is a resolution congratulating Omaha North High School on winning the 2014 Nebraska Class A State Football Championship. First of all, here's the resolution, resolved. Whereas on November 24, 2014, Omaha North High School defeated Creighton Property High School 41 to 0 at Memorial Stadium in Lincoln to win the 2014 Nebraska Class A State High School Football Championship. And whereas this resulted in giving the Vikings an undefeated season, and whereas this board wishes to extend their sincerest, sincerest congratulations and recognition of this achievement. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognizes the achievement of the dedicated student athletes who contributed in leading to Vikings to another state title dated this second day of December 2014. Do I have a motion?
You betcha.
Please vote. Awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Would you like, gentlemen, please come and shake our hands.
We could have talked together.
I've got Commissioner Boyle, but before he speaks, I just wanted to inform you gentlemen that we will be sending out a certificate to you for your school. Commissioner Boyle?
Well, I just wanted, what I said to them was, congratulations is terrific. Ann and I were very excited to see that happen. And as I mentioned, you know, and I think you do too, we have some prep connections, but that's how life is sometimes, you know. Really, really thrilled. You've got a bunch of young men that really appear to be working together.
Yes.
So we congratulate you on, on that. That's a, that's terrific. And plus, this win is just great for those young men.
Mr. Haynes would have been here, but he has an administrative meeting, not a faculty or otherwise.
Great.
Back to school.
Brother Gene.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen. You should be receiving your certificate shortly. Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, we also have a resolution congratulating Omaha Scott Catholic High School on winning the 2014 Nebraska Class B State Football Championship. Is there anybody here from Scott? Nope. Okay. But I will take a moment to read the resolution. Resolved whereas on November 25, 2014, Omaha Scott Catholic High School defeated Elkhorn High School 40 to 10 at Memorial Stadium in Lincoln to win the 2014 Nebraska Class B State High School Football Championship. And whereas this became the second state football title earned by the Scott Skyhawks, and whereas this board wishes to extend their sincerest congratulations and recognition of this achievement. Now therefore be it resolved by this Board of County Commissioners, Douglas County, Nebraska, that this board hereby recognize the achievement of the dedicated student athletes who contributed in leading the Scott Skyhawks to their second high school state title dated this second day of December 2014. Do you have a motion?
So move.
Please vote. Thank you. Commissioner Boyle, did you have something?
No, I didn't.
Okay. Commissioner Morgan?
I was going to mention, I think next week it'd be nice to ask Patrick or Marcos to put something together concerning Mr. Pantano, who passed away, that worked a long time in the Treasurers Office. Excellent person there. And, you know, something for his family. If we could do that.
Patrick.
Marcos, thank you.
Thank you. Also, we will be sending a certificate to Omaha Scott High School. Did you want something? Commissioner Duda?
I'll, I'll try to be brief, but while we're reveling in all the great things that have gone on here athletically, I also went to just an outstanding fight last week with Terrence Crawford. And what a great boxer he is, but what a great ambassador he is for the city of Omaha as well. I mean, he is so loyal to the city, and the city is loyal to him. And it's neat to see. I've gotten to go to both of his title fights and, outstanding boxer, but a great emissary, emissary for the city as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have citizens' comments. Is there anyone in the chambers that wishes to speak? The Board of Commissioners, that is not on the agenda. I see none. Next, we have a presentation by Commissioner Chris Rogers.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to ask John Janetta to come up. John is the President and CEO of Heartland Family Services, and we saw this presentation about two weeks at the JDAI meeting, and it's about trauma-informed care. And hopefully, as you see John's report, you will be able to make the tie that the basis of everything that we've been talking about in regards to mental health kind of starts here. And it's getting this emphasis now through a whole lot of other places. It's making its way mainstream into the training aspects. And actually, in two weeks, John's going to give this presentation to the Board of Health in respects to, the Board of Health used to have five areas of emphasis. This year, we added a sixth, which was the mental health piece. And, I mean, to set John up, there is a, there's a letter from the Office of Juvenile Justice and Delinquency Prevention, and some aspects of that letter talks about in respects to trauma-informed care, that we are facing one of the most significant challenges to the future of America's children. It says exposure to violence is not limited to one community or groups of children. It says that a growing body of research is finding that the vast majority of children involved in the juvenile justice system have been exposed to traumatic violence and often several types of violence at some point and sometime repeatedly in their young lives. And then there's another part of it that talks about the advancements, it says advancements, no, excuse me, it says that from their task force, they did a report on this, and they called for every professional who works with children to educate themselves on the impact of trauma on children's lives. It also challenges child service professionals to find the resource to implement programs to provide trauma-informed care. So with that, I hope you see through John's report where this ties, and hopefully, after we can have a little dialogue on it. But with that, John, would you get into it?
Thank you, Commissioner Rogers.
Welcome.
Again, I'm John, I'm John Janetta with Heartland Family Service. If you're not familiar with our agency, we've been around since 1875. We're a multi-service agency. We serve children, adults, and families across the lifespan and help them address many of the social problems that face our community, such as addictions, mental health, early childhood education, child abuse and neglect, juvenile delinquency, poverty, homelessness, on and on. And, you know, 80% of the people that we serve make $20,000 a year or less, 55% make $10,000 a year, a year or less, and most of the people that we serve come to us having experienced significant trauma, oftentimes as children and then again as adults. And so what I'm going to talk to you about is one of the largest longitudinal studies of its kind called the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study, and then how that sort of feeds into this idea that Chris was talking about relative to trauma-informed care. The Adverse Childhood Experiences Study was started in 1995. It was conducted between 95 and 97 as a collaboration between Dr. Robert Anda from the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention in Atlanta, and Dr. Vince Faletti with Kaiser Permanente, and specifically their Health Appraisal Center in San Diego, California. And from 95 to 97, 17,337 people came through that Health Appraisal Center, and as they came through, they were asked to complete a survey that had them indicate how many categories of adversity they experienced growing up from birth through the age of 18. And of that population, slightly more women than men, about 75% Caucasian, 10% Latino, 5% African American, and predominantly middle-class. For about two years previous to launching the study, these two researchers also spent some time really looking at what are the categories of violence that children face, and that was the basis for the study that started in 95 to 97. From 97 on, though, they've been going back and looking at what are the mortality morbidity issues that this population has faced since that time. So the study continues. They're not having additional people actually complete the survey. They're sticking with the 17,337, and they're basically measuring now what's happening to them. What are they getting sick from, and what are they dying? Just as, as context, then, those categories include contact sexual abuse, recurrent physical or emotional abuse, alcohol, having an alcohol or drug abuser in the household, having an incarcerated household member, having witnessed your mother being treated violently, having a household member with mental illness, having experienced emotional or physical neglect, and having only one or no parents. And they've been really surprised by the results. Initially, only 36% of that population of 17,337 people experienced none of those categories of adversity growing up. And so they were really surprised that it was, that, that there weren't more people in that category, particularly since this is a middle-class population. They were especially surprised by the fact, though, that 25% had experienced three or more. This study has been replicated in more urban settings because there's been some criticism, well, this is a largely middle-class population. What would happen if you were looking at a more urban population, more diverse, maybe more low-income people? And what they found is that the population of people with, who had experienced no adversity is slightly smaller, and where you see real differences of the population that experienced four or more, almost double. Also, you see that for the people who experienced four or more, 50% are, were below the federal poverty line. What's important about experiencing, how does experiencing this trauma make a difference for the, for people? It goes back to what we know about neuroscience. I'm not an expert, so I'll explain it very simply because mostly that's what I'm capable of doing. But the oldest part of the brain is the amygdala, which is that red dot there that you see in the middle. Oftentimes, it's referred to as the emotional center, and because what happens with the amygdala, its role is as the senses bring information to it, to the brain, the amygdala filters out, and when it identifies that the senses are telling the body or the brain that there's something scary out there, then it initiates this really complex series of events that leads to, all the way down to the adrenal glands and the production of cortisol and adrenaline. And what those two hormones do is it causes your heart rate to increase, it causes your breathing to increase, become faster, it stores more of the nutrients that you're consuming to sugar and fat, and your digestion stops, your immune system is suppressed, and all of these things are really wonderful and helpful in an emergency situation because they're going to help you either fight or run away. However, they become extraordinarily detrimental when your body thinks that you are constantly being attacked or on the verge of being attacked or going to be under attack in any second. And so what the study is showing is how this actually starts to cause major, major problems for people when their bodies are thinking they're constantly going to be under attack. We also know that in the brain, once cortisol is produced, it basically shuts down the prefrontal cortex, which is the part of the brain that controls all your executive functioning, your impulse control, and your higher-level thinking. Same part of the brain that's deadened when we drink alcohol. So imagine little children who are growing up in homes where there's all kinds of adversity, what we call toxic stress, now going to school, that cortisol production is accelerated because the brain is thinking, because the amygdala is saying, you're, something bad's going to happen. You need to either run away or fight. They're showing up in school, their cortisol levels are through the roof, their brains are shut down for business. And so, you know, we can see what the consequences of that are in our schools already. And so what happens is we have social, emotional, and cognitive impairment because of the overproduction of cortisol. That leads to the adoption of health risk behaviors because in addition to having a prefrontal cortex that's pretty much shut down for business, we know that the most effective way of changing people's behavior is modeling. And unfortunately for children growing up in toxic stress households, the modeling that they're seeing are parents who probably grew up in toxic stress households as well, and they're dealing with that stress in maladaptive wage, which means they're using stress coping strategies that include drinking, promiscuous sex, drugs, all sorts of ways, tobacco that are good to bring stress levels down, but they come with a whole host of really negative consequences. And because of that adoption of health risk behaviors, we're seeing disease, disability, and social problems, and unfortunately, early death. So now, going back to the study, and the 17,337 people that they've been following now since 1997, they have found that the more categories of adverse childhood experiences this population indicated back in 95 through 95, 97, the more likely they are now to develop any one of the 10 leading causes of death. That's heart disease, cancer, obesity, chronic obstructive pulmonary disorder, et cetera, et cetera. They're also significantly more likely to use tobacco, to abuse alcohol or drugs, suffer from major depression, attempt or commit suicide, have an unintended pregnancy, acquire a sexually transmitted disease, and use violence. In fact, every single thing that they have studied has shown this pattern. There has been no exception yet, and that's why they refer to it as an epidemiologist's dream that never seen anything like this. And so what they're seeing is this kind of, what they refer to as a dose-response pattern. The more causes, the more categories of adversity, which would be the dose, the higher their response. So in this instance, we're looking at attempted suicide. So again, this is that, those 17,337 people. In that category, the 36% relative, essentially, that indicated that they had no categories of adversity growing up. You can see that maybe 1, 1.5% of that population has attempted suicide so far. You go to the people in the one category of adversity, it almost doubles to about 2.5. You go to two categories, it almost doubles again to 5%. You go to three, it almost doubles again to 10. You go to four, it almost triples to 20. Here, smoking tobacco, same pattern. It goes up as the, as the categories of adversity go up. Chronic obstructive pulmonary disease, severe obesity, injected drugs, illicit drugs, adult alcoholism, chronic depression in women, multiple sexual partners, three or more marriages, serious job problems. Again, every single thing that they've studied has shown that same pattern. Study in Washington State also wanted to know, well, we know that, okay, so adverse, these adverse experiences in childhood obviously have an impact, but there's certainly other things that have an impact. So what part of the, of the equation are these, is this adversity? How much does that play on the particular issue, like in this instance, current depression? And their research discovered that 54% of, of the attributable risk for depression is related to adverse childhood experiences. 46% would be other factors, like genetics, for example. Hopelessness, it's 43%. Suicide, 58%. Drug abuse, 50%. Alcoholism, 65%. IV drug use, 68%. Domestic violence, 52%. And disability days, those days where you just can't get out of bed and go to work and do anything, 52%. So what does this mean? That adverse childhood experiences are common, way more common than these researchers thought. They're highly interrelated. If you have one, you're way more likely to have more. They pile up and have accumulative impacts, so the more you have, the worse it is for you. And it creates what these researchers have referred to as an unvirtuous cycle, where you have toxic childhood stress that leads to chronic fight or flight response, overproduction of cortisol and adrenaline, which leads to changes in brain chemistry. And in fact, scarily, some research that just came out this spring is showing that if this happens enough over enough generations, those changes start to become encoded in the DNA and become permanent. Regardless of whether a child is born in toxic stress or not, they're going to have, their brains will be permanently rewired because of so many successive generations of, of toxic stress within that family. And then, lastly, because of the changes in the brain, you're more likely to use maladaptive coping strategies, the drinking, the IV drug use, the promiscuous sex, tobacco, which then means the next generation of children is growing up in a toxic stress household. then means the next generation of children is growing up in a toxic stress household. Additional studies have shown that parenting adults with five or more adverse childhood experiences are fourteen times more likely to pass on adverse childhood experiences. We know in some of our residential treatment programs, most of the families coming to us for those programs have at least five categories of adverse childhood experiences on average. And another study of court-involved youth with four or more adverse childhood experiences, fifty-one percent were special ed, twenty, seventy-four percent had less than a two-point-oh GPA, sixty-four percent had four or more suspensions, and eighty-five percent had been suspended the first time by second grade, thirty-three percent reoffended in two years or less. In a study of homelessness, this happened on the East Coast, fifty-one percent of the people in a two-hundred-person study had one or more Ases, seventy-four percent had four or more. So we know that Ases account for a large percentage of social and health problems and largely have gone unaddressed. It's not something that's really been on the radar until lately. So what can be done? Going back to this, to the dose-response pattern, initially, researchers were looking at how horrible this is, the fact that your risk goes so, goes so high up as your categories of exposure grow up. But eventually, they were able to get to the point to see, okay, even in the four or more category, where you've got twenty percent of the people now who have attempted suicide, you have more than eighty percent who haven't. So why is that? So some researchers now have been looking at, well, what's going on with, with the eighty percent who haven't? Why haven't they? What's kept them from attempting suicide that wasn't there to help the twenty percent or so that did? And what they're finding is that there seem to be two things that can inoculate children from the effects of toxic stress. One is hope, and hope doesn't mean just positive attitude about the future, it means having a positive attitude about what might happen for them in their future, but also understanding what they can do that will get them there. So it's the will and the way. And then the second piece of that is a caring adult, and probably these two go together. The presence of a caring adult is probably helping the children understand what they can do that's going to get them to a positive future, and that that positive future is possible if they work hard and do certain things. We also know that there are universal primary prevention, prevention strategies. Some communities, some states have implemented activities that would be targeted to everybody without even asking people, well, how much toxic stress did you experience growing up? How many categories of adverse childhood experience? They just assume there's going to be a large percentage, and they deliver interventions or strategies that, that target everybody, largely designed to decrease stress, build skills like around parenting or what have you, and build resiliency, because even if you haven't experienced toxic stress, those things are going to help you. Then it's identifying people perhaps who are at risk for adverse childhood experience, figuring out how much, how much exposure have they had, and then implementing specific interventions to help them. And then lastly, there's evidence-based treatment for people who are already having issues because of unaddressed trauma, and helping them to actually recover from that trauma, and then prevent them from re-traumatizing additional generations. In our agency, what that means is as we create a culture of trauma-informed care, it's reframing how we think about the people coming to us for help. Instead of thinking, what's wrong with you, we think, what happened to you? And I know that seems like a small difference, but it makes a huge difference for the people that we serve, because one of the things that people coming to us for help really need to have is they need to feel safe. They need to know that when they come to us, that we are going to help them, we're not going to re-traumatize them. And sadly, our industry is really guilty of re-traumatizing people who need help the most. How often are young people who have been raped, who are sent to facilities, twenty-four-hour facilities, then held in restraints? How often are young people who have been verbally abused, coming to facilities and then abused by staff who maybe are frustrated or what have you, kids are out of control? And so we know that we need to really change our approach and understand the level, high levels of trauma people have coming to us, and the worst thing we can do is to re-traumatize them in ways that are all too similar to what they've already experienced. And so in our agency, we make commitments to safety, transparency, collaboration, empowerment, and choice, and those commitments go to our, our staff as well as our employee, as well as the people that we serve. So trauma-informed care, more than how we do, how we change what we're doing for our, our clients, is really about how we change what we do with our staff. Because if our staff don't feel safe, if they don't feel supported, if they don't feel like they're, they have a choice in what, in what interventions they're able to use and how they're able to interact with our clients and do their jobs, if they don't feel empowered, then they're not going to be able to do those same thing for, those same things for our clients. I can't tell staff, you need to go do this and do it now because I told you, and then expect them to go over to a client and say, how can I help you? What is it that's most pressing for you? What's top of mind for you? How can I help lift you up and get you, help you to reach those goals? And so it's really about alignment. If our, if our, if the reason people are coming to us for help is caring, and our brand intention, our mission is about increasing their safety, self-sufficient and well-being, self-sufficiency and well-being, then we need to have a culture that's about authenticity. We need to be trauma-informed, and we need to be servant leaders so that we can build that kind of culture and sustain it. And so I just want to close with a story about it. This is not a client, it's somebody who goes around speaking about trauma-informed care. I like to use her story because she's so public about it, so I don't potentially violate any confidentiality. Her name is Toni Erkane, her nickname is Neen, and she actually made a video called Healing Neen, which you can purchase and view. It's an excellent, excellent documentary. And we recently had Neen here in February to speak to all of our staff and do some training. But she was born in Annapolis, Maryland, and by the time she was, I think, nine, had experienced all categories of adverse childhood experiences. She spent nineteen years living under a bridge homeless after she developed an addiction to crap cocaine, which she used to maladaptively cope with her stress. It came with all these horrible, horrible side effects, but what she will say is that it was remarkably effective in taking away her stress and helping her deal with all of that trauma that she had experienced. She was abused first by her mother, and then her mother would have parties, and she had younger siblings, and she knew that when it got to a certain stage, that these men would come and try to violate the, the children, and so she would protect them, and she would offer herself up so that, to protect her younger siblings. So she was, starting at age nine, experienced sexual abuse. She, as I said, she lived under a bridge for nineteen years. She was repeatedly assaulted and violated, not only by other people on the streets, but by police, by a therapist that she went to see for one of her, one of her addiction programs, and was arrested eighty-three times and convicted sixty-six times. She's somebody that if you ever met her when she was in this stage, would have thought there is no hope for this woman, absolutely no hope. But about ten years ago, she was pregnant for the fourth time, and she really wanted to keep this baby. All of her children had been removed previously. And so she got into a program very much like one that we have called Family Works. It's a residential treatment program where the pregnant mothers can come, or mothers who have children and their children come with them. And so she learned how to attain sobriety, maintain sobriety, deal with her mental health, deal with her trauma, and also attach with and love her child. She said, I know how to take care of a child. I've been changing diapers and feeding my younger brothers and sisters and taking care of them for years. I just didn't know how to love a child. I never saw that, I didn't know how to do that. And she got that in this program. And so now she goes all over the world, she's in the one, she's in the top one percent of all wage earners. She goes all over, all over the world presenting. She has a company that she's developed where she's creating trauma centers, she's creating, she's writing a book, she's got another documentary coming out. Her daughter is in the top one percent testing-wise in a private school, she's learning Mandarin Chinese, she plays the viola. I mean, what, what's happened here is what the researchers would say, let's create a virtuous cycle. Instead of that unvirtuous cycle, let's moderate the adverse childhood experiences of parents, and then let's prevent the adverse childhood experiences from reaching that next generation.
Chris, we have a couple of questions.
Can I set you all up first, though? I, I mean, hopefully you see the power in this presentation, but this is, you know, when we have the money that comes from the Crime Commission, and I look through it, and sometimes I'd, I'd struggle with some of the stuff that's being asked, and there was a question there for about two thousand dollars this year to do ACE training, and I kept asking, you know, you know, what the hell is this training going to do? I mean, we need the money for the programs and things like that. And I had been hearing, you know, for, for a couple of years now, you know, I've been talking about in the Board of Health, and I just, it's been coming to kind of mold that some of these effects were playing themselves out. This presentation, when I heard it two months ago, I got it, really got it. But in October, the Public Health Association of Nebraska had people from Region Six give a presentation on Ases, and it, and it helped this click a whole lot more. So we have money for this training that the JAG has got to kind of do this training. I don't know if you're involved in it to some degree, John, but I know Sean Koonfer, Kim Karp, and those guys are doing it. And the thing that, before you ask your questions, that I wanted to throw out and think about is that you're going to see two, presentate, two contracts under Child and Youth Services. Not that they're dealing exactly with this, but when we're, when we're looking at the JDAI data, the issue that we're having trouble with, the two that we've identified, is disproportionate minority containment or contact. The other is warrant runners that are running all the time. I mean, they get them in the system, and they get to a place, and they just run. And when I heard this, I kind of think this is somewhere playing in it. There's a whole lot of other pieces, but all these other symptoms that you saw, we've seen them in the jail, we've seen them in other places like that. And so this presentation, to me, connected the dots and officially connected public health and juvenile justice together for a while. And so that's why I asked for John to come and do that. And so, you know, the FSG study has taken us here, when it talks about a lot of stuff going upstream and how we're going about it, and so hopefully you all see the, the power that's kind of in this piece. And my hope is that in the future, and hopefully the board sees this and goes there, Patrick saw this training in J, in the JDAI's meeting. And what I would love to do is have everybody associated with children in the county go through that training, since we pay for it to some degree. They can do it in an hour, they can do it in two hours, they can do it in several forms. But particularly, everybody under our direct control that's dealing with juvenile should go to this. Some may complain about it, but I think it's something that they probably, that we, they need to do to some degree because the science is telling us everything in this respect of where it's going. And actually, next year in conversations that we're having about the money that we distribute that comes from the Crime Commission, I almost am to the point, and probably will be there by the new year, that everybody that signs a contract with us should get some type of training or show that they've had this in some way if they're dealing with juveniles. So I just wanted to set that up before you all went free on the questions, so thank you.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. Commissioner Rogers, thank you. This was very enlightening. It touches upon a presentation we had the first year I was here, about six years ago, brought to us by the, I think it was called the TED E-Bear.
Yes.
Which is counseling for people who've suffered traumatic, traumatic incidences from a loved one dying, and how that ties in with youth incarceration and future incarceration. And this seems to tie in very, very well with that, except expands upon it. But I did not hear you mention about Nebraska's tendency to separate children from their families. Is that involved in this in any way as a, I forgot, adverse childhood experience?
It wasn't, I mean, having only one or no parents was considered a category of adverse childhood experiences, but I think the research shows that having that, that removal is a traumatic event for kids, and if it can be avoided and they can be safe by staying with their parents with the right resources, then that's a better direction to go.
And any relationship to, as to whether that's, depending on the type of abuse, preferable in the child's psyche to stay with his parents, realizing he's going to get slapped around once in a while, unfortunately, or being taken out? You know, is there a way to balance the two?
You know, I'm not as familiar with that, with that information, but I do know, obviously, you have to balance what's the best, you know, and what, the child has to be kept safe. And if you're not sure if the child can be safe with the parents, particularly with, as it relates to physical violence, then it might be, at least for a short term, that removal is important. But generally speaking, most often, kids are removed for neglect, and, and that, and that is probably more easily mediated in the community with the right resources.
Then you're talking about the attempted suicide and eighty percent who haven't. Have you studied the relationship to music, playing an instrument, creating the music? Because that, some of the research I read in the sixties, seventies, and even rather recently, shows the calming effect of knowing how to play and express your emotions through music, and how classical music, many times, has, just listening to it, has that same calming effect. So have, do you know if this study's gone into that as one of the, part of the eighty percent, so to speak?
This particular study hasn't, but there's been a lot of work looking at this, a broader, sort of a broader category of what's called mindfulness, and music plays into that. It's basically, you know, the production of cortisol is an involuntary mechanism, but you can actually, on a voluntary basis, bring your cortisol levels down. It doesn't, it doesn't, you're not just a victim to it, if you understand how to do that. So listening to music, yoga, meditation, these are all adaptive coping strategies, physical fitness, these are all positive ways that can bring that cortisol level down and help your, help your body and help your mind and help you. And obviously, music plays into that, and is one of the strategies that is often taught to people as part of some of those evidence-based approaches I was telling you about for intervening.
Good. And when you were mentioning the hope, that reminded me of reverse engineering, which is what I think can be done with this program in so many different aspects, where we use the positive aspect and reverse engineer to find out why is it positive and apply it to the twenty percent that is thinking of suicide.
Absolutely. What are ways that we can inoculate, better inoculate those? I mean, we probably, as much as we want to, we probably won't be able to stop every one of these families that are having this adversity, this cycle that's happened. So we continue to work on that, but while we're doing that, what can we do to help the kids that we know are growing up in those environments to protect them as much as we can from the ill effects of that process?
And while we're doing this, is there a way to utilize the school system's nursing staffs? My wife was a school nurse for twenty-five, twenty-eight, thirty years, I don't recall how long. But the nurses are first responders in many of these cases. Have you interreacted with the school systems?
I've been actually, Council Bus Community School District has actually invited me to do training with all their administrators, all of their counselors, and career navigators, and now some of the schools are inviting me in. I haven't been asked to do that here in Omaha yet, but my wife's a teacher in Bellevue, and we talk about this a lot because she sees the kids every day who have a horrible time sitting still and listening and learning, and, and she knows, she's in Title I school, so she knows that chances are they're coming from a home where there's lots of toxic stress going on. And I said, you've got to help these kids bring down their cortisol levels, that's all there is to it. Largely what you're seeing, they can't necessarily stop until you can help them to become centered and calm, and you can teach them how to do that. She said, well, when do we have time? I said, but do you have time not to?
Right. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John, I got a couple of questions. I was going to hit on the school system also. Are there early symptoms of this before it gets too far that, you know, if, if somebody goes to visit the children's house to see, you know, the, the culture of the household or the school systems, are there early symptoms that you can see and hopefully attack that before it gets too far out of hand?
I mean, it's, it can be difficult to identify because, again, this can happen in middle-income families, high-income families, and as well as poor families. Obviously, when you see indications of neglect and abuse, it's an indicator that there's something else going on. And oftentimes, you'll find, I think fifty-six percent of the time, and at least in this state, when there's abuse and neglect, there's also drug abuse and addiction. So, so as you uncover one thing, it generally will lead to the, to the other. But there are lots of examples now. Missouri has a trauma, trauma-smart Head Start program that they've piloted and now launching statewide, that, again, is more of a universal intervention. They just assume every kid coming in is going to have experienced some trauma, even though they know not all of them will have, but it's going to be helpful regardless. And so everything is trauma-informed across the board, every, every person from the bus driver to the people working, serving the food, to the teachers, to the paraprofessionals, the administrators, everybody has been trained, and they're all on the same page, understanding that every kid could potentially have experienced a high level of trauma, and they need to, first of all, we all need to emotionally self-regulate ourselves, do that really well to help keep everybody feeling safe and calm and et cetera.
Wow, that's amazing for Missouri. Another thing, you had mentioned a possible hereditary. So let's say you've got, you know, down the line, you've got the great-grandparents, grandparents, you know, parents and stuff, all have, had this situation, and you come to this child, and this set of parents was able to control it through that child. So is the hereditary fact still going to be there for that child, beans that child is living in a more secure, stable home, or does it still go back?
Well, there's, what the research is starting to indicate, and again, this was, this wasn't with people, it was with mice, but what they saw was after a certain number of generations, it became genetically encoded. So that's the fear.
Even if they're currently in a stable home?
That's the fear that with, that, that we'll start to see that same thing in people, that if we let this keep going on, it will become permanently part of that, that, that generation and then all future generations' genetic code. And, you know, they, they've seen this a little bit, different sort of study, but in Israel, they've done a lot of study on post-traumatic stress disorder because so many Holocaust survivors went there after the war, and they've seen the, the effects of post-traumatic stress four generations later.
And I understand there's different medications out there for, you know, whether... And I understand there's different medications out there for, you know, whether medications or support groups for, you know, depression or alcoholism or drug abuse and stuff. Is there something there, out there though, that could almost, if you see it, is there something that you can do for this child to prevent, even though, let's say the child is in abusive home? Can you do something to help this child besides calming it, calming the child down to help cope with the, the, the home that they're in that's abusive?
Well, the best thing is going to be to help the parents.
Okay.
And stop the abuse while also helping the child.
Which is sometimes hard to do though, especially if they're so accustomed to it.
It can be, yeah. And again, that's why I think it's really important to work with our schools because it's another conversation I frequently have with my wife. Teachers are teachers because they love kids, right? And so it's really hard for them to see children coming into the classroom who haven't been fed, who clearly haven't been fed, who have experienced some level of trauma, and you hear some of these stories and it breaks your heart. Well, it's natural then for teachers to get really angry at the parents, really, really angry. And, but I, what I tell her is that if you're angry at those parents and they're coming into this school, they're going to know that in a second, that you're judging them and then they are done with you. And your only chance, your best chance of helping that child has just gone out the door. You have no help of really ever helping that kid if you have, if you have so turned off those parents to you as being a resource to potentially help them.
Yeah, because then the parents find out, then they're going to even abuse the child even more.
Maybe they'll switch to another school and, and you will never be able to really figure out what's happening.
And unfortunately, some administrations kind of turn, even though the teachers can come to them, unfortunately, some administrations just turn their head in like a deaf ear and they don't want to do anything about it.
Well, it seems that, at least the feedback we're getting from schools is that the prevalence is increasing so dramatically that it's, it's overwhelming.
Good.
And they really don't know what to do.
Commissioner Boyle.
First of all, I thank Mr. Rogers for bringing this presentation to us. It was really fascinating. And I'll tell you, Rick, I clicked through it fast. I appreciate that too. It's really, had to watch, listen. Is this available online or anywhere? How, I don't know if this is a, I've got two daughters who are involved with, one's a doctor and one's a nurse practitioner. And they deal with, the nurse practitioner is in, in San Francisco at the High-Risk Pregnancy Unit at the University of California. And she deals with, we just saw her last couple of weeks ago, and I mean, just deals, every day is a disaster, every, every day is something horrible. And, and then another daughter is an OB-GYN, and she's in Missouri and deals with a lot of folks who are very poor. And I'm interested in passing this on to them. Is there some way I can do that?
I don't have this online, but I could, I could figure out a way to get it to you. It's a rather large file with all the video. There's also a couple of websites I could recommend.
Okay, that'd be great.
That they would probably, the original research.
Okay.
There's a website for that and they can look at all of that that they'd probably find interesting.
And then how does someone get tuned into ACE training, the training that comes with this you talked about?
We have, that's what I mentioned before, we, we put some money into the Crown Commission request this year, so we have $2,000, so ready to do the training. The JAG has applied for it. And that was my thought with the board, my, my thought was that we, we're going to make it available for everybody.
Okay.
But almost, you know, everybody, at least under our jurisdiction, I think should be able to go through the training.
Absolutely.
And so we, we're planning on doing the training like this coming year.
Okay, $2,000 to do that?
That's what they budget for, yeah. I mean, they, they, I don't know if exactly that, but they, but the way Sean, those guys budgeted, that they're going to get ready to do the training.
I really want to thank you. You did a great job and just terrific presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan.
I also want to thank you, John, very much. How long have you been the CEO?
Five and a half years.
Well, very good. You're really contributing.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Really explained it. I was kind of, you know, high on my coffee or something this morning, so you really got me. I understood what you're saying.
He needs a little bit of help down there too.
Commissioner Kraft.
Yes. John, how do you spell your last name?
It's spelled J-E-A-N-E-T-T-A.
I'm glad I asked because that wasn't over there when I had scrolled down. And Heartland Family Services.
Service, uh huh. No S at the end.
Very good. Thank you.
You bet.
Chris, that's it.
Yeah. And John, like I said, thank you for, if you, like, my, my thought is, the more I hear it, the more it connects together. And so, you know, if you want to, it'll be at the Board of Health on the third Wednesday of this month, he's going to present again there. And my hope is to just keep trying to connect the dots on this because he, he basically gave me some theory to what I thought was going on in my head. And I, and I, and my hope is that we can tie this world together in public health a little more, so appreciate it.
Commissioner Boyle.
John, I have one more question I want to ask. What is the major source of your funding?
Ours is about seventy percent is government, so it's federal through state to local, kind of, most of it passed through.
Okay. Yeah, are you having problems with getting that funding or is it?
Sometimes it's getting, there's a longer, longer time between when we bill and when we actually receive because it's not traditional grants anymore, it's more contracts. So cash flow has become a much, much bigger issue for us, for a lot of agencies like ours than it used to be.
Joe, do we, do we fund any, fund this agency directly or is it all passed through or do you know? Patrick?
We don't, we don't fund.
We don't fund it at all?
John came on our radar, well, he came on, John, I was saying, leach of Omaha class, but he was at A before this. And, and, but he came on the radar with this topic just three weeks ago when he presented at JDAI.
Okay.
And I didn't know that they were dealing in this realm, actually too. Is Project Harmony playing in this realm a little bit? Well, Project Harmony is kind of playing in this realm a little bit too. I couldn't come to peace with where Project Harmony was in this because their role was different. But with the County Health Improvement Plan, the healthcare, the, the health, the health department staff had kept bringing this up and I could not grip where Project Harmony was in this. This kind of helped me tie that string too. So we don't fund them directly. I don't, I don't know if they've, they've never applied or the services they have haven't been there. So, you know, John is presenting this so much more because they are emphasizing it at his organization and I'm assuming you're trying to spread the message on it and spread their tide.
Right.
To being able to offer the trauma-informed care. You know, who's to say that once we do this initial training, there could be some more in-depth piece that they could play a part in. But what I wanted, you know, the board to see is that everything we've been talking about, I'm convinced, is playing some role here.
I am too.
And even though we're, we're dealing with it now, there's going to have to be a greater upstream push that, that needs to be done and that he alluded to it enough.
Yeah, I do too. I agree with what you're saying. I'm very impressed by this. I'd like to ask, and you know, I, this, the whole mental health crisis bothers me. We have, you know, we're operating a, the jail has, you know, something like thirty-five, forty percent of the people in there have, are suffering from mental illness. And there are people who are, don't have any criminal past or criminal activity who are suffering from mental illness. And the funding is just difficult. But, so I can't make any kind of commitment, but I'd be interesting, I'd be interested in hearing, you know, if you were to receive a, able to get the county to cough up, you know, eighty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand dollars, what would you do with, you know, what could you do with additional money? I know that money's always important, but I don't know whether, you know, I'm not trying to say throwing money at something, but this sounds like a terrific.
Well, I'll tell you something that's really kind of come to light, is doing these presentations has created a little bit of an issue because, for example, I went and I spoke to Impact One and they're, they asked me to come and address their whole board and provide this training and talk to people at North Star Foundation.
Oh, yeah.
And when I was at Impact One, someone from Girls Inc. was there and we experienced this with our own after-school, summer school program, the Solomon Girls Center. So there's this huge need in these after-school, summer school enrichment programs, you've got these young people coming. People are aware now that they're coming oftentimes with some level, I mean, we've always known this, but now they've got more data behind it, that we've got some people, some young people coming who have significant unaddressed trauma. And we can provide all of the extracurricular activities, all of the homework help.
Right.
But if we don't deal with that trauma, they're going to, they're just going to keep, we're, we're addressing symptoms without ever, ever getting to the real problem. And so, so now we're getting more people coming to us who are, they're referring people, they, they understand they've got unaddressed trauma, help them. Well, it's like two weeks before we can get somebody in because we're so backlogged because we don't have enough therapists that can provide this kind of work. So if I had extra money, I would hire some therapists and I would put them at North Star, at Girls Inc. And have them help those young people and the staff deal with their trauma.
I think, I think we need to get some real figures on that because that, that really makes a lot of sense to me and I'd like to invite you, it's not my place to do it, but I'm going to do it anyway, invite you to, to send the commissioner, the chair, Mary Ann Borgerson, information about what you would do, you know, to hire those people that you talked about in those facilities and what it would cost. I think that's just, I think it's, you're right on point, so I'm really impressed.
You should, you should make that note that the board has helped me.
Okay.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Perfect job. Thank you again, Chris.
Thanks, Chris. All right, next we have committees. The first is the Finance Committee from Commissioner Clarida and PJ Morgan.
All right. Your side.
Thank you. Next we have Child and Youth Services. Chris?
Yeah, I'd like to take the two together. Basically, they're, they're money that we have and we renegotiated the contract to try to use the money. And like I said, a lot of it is based out of not particularly trauma-informed care, but this is data out of JDAI where we're trying to stem this large amount of kids that we have in the jail that are there because they're running from placements. And a lot of it we're trying to do is give some wraparound services based on that. So these two contracts are centered on there and trying to alter services around there. They, they go from now until the end of June and that finishes out the rounding of Crown Commission funding. So I had a move approval.
Second.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next we have Human Resources, Weekly Personnel Report from Civil Service as presented. Any questions or comments? I see none. Next we have Weekly CAO Report on Staff Assaults. Patrick?
None to report.
Thank you. Next we have Legislative Issues. Anything, Marcos?
No, ma'am.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I'm trying to get my, I've got a comment.
Commissioner Boyle.
I read, speaking to Marcos, I read in the State NACO report about contacting state senators and so forth, people that are elected. And they had a really, it was really terrific suggestions about some tours that have to be worked on, of course, but I'm thinking Corrections and possibly the Youth Center and other places. The, that, to show what we do and, and to very politely talk about the lack of state funding and to let them see what we're trying to do and particularly with what's happened with Corrections at the level of, of skill they've developed in trying to intervene with people who are suffering from mental illness and so forth. And particularly, I think they'd be impressed with our new alcohol testing program that, you know, so I'd like to see us get some, some senators, it doesn't have to all be from Douglas County, but probably be helpful if we get some from Long Pine or someplace too. But we'll talk about, I think that'd be a good thing to do and try to get it scheduled sometime before the session starts, if that's possible. I mean, all the holidays are intervening, but maybe we could try it. When do we usually have the breakfast for the senators? When do we do that?
Aren't you, aren't we working on that?
They don't have it yet. Right, Marcos?
Kerry Egan is working on it right now from Lancaster County. I'll be contacting him today.
Going to combine with them?
Yeah, Kerry Egan has been setting it up. He's the Lancaster County Administrator for the breakfast at the State Capitol. So I'll contact him again today to see.
Oh, is he going to be in Lincoln?
At the State Capitol.
Okay, I guess. Okay, good. All right, well, it might be, we've got to talk about some kind of a more, just not, not lengthy presentation, but some of the snapshot of what happens in Corrections. It'd really be nice, we'd get them up to Omaha sometime, take them through some of these places. Thanks.
Thank you. We do have need for executive session regarding labor negotiations, litigation and personnel. But before we move into that, I want to make a note, the last scheduled meeting for 2014 for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will be Tuesday, December 16th. And the first scheduled meeting for 2015 for the Douglas County Board of Commissioners will be Tuesday, January 13, 2015. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rogers? Motion passes.
Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I am now.
Oh beautiful, for spacious skies, For amber waves of grain, For purple mountain majesty, Above the fruited plain. America, America, God shed his grace on thee, And crown thy good with brotherhood, From sea to shining sea.